Can I sign up to speak against?
[laughing]
Like to call the February 22nd special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of Post Falls to order. Will you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. We'll go ahead and start with a roll call.
That's me.
Yes.
It would be you.
Here.
Oh.
[laughing] Hampi.
Oh, here.
Stephenson. Oh, no.
No.
Schlot Howard.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Carrie.
Here.
Ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and presentations. I believe we do have...
Yeah, so we started a couple meetings ago, a national whatever day it is. So today's the National Be Humble Day. So there's a little blurb on it. It just states that people across the world, irrespective of their religion, culture, and philosophy, come together and stress the importance of being humble. Many great personalities say humility is the most difficult of all virtues to attain. Either way, Be Humble Day focuses on the importance of being humble. So that's today's...
Very nice. And thank you all for humbly serving. Appreciate that. Amendments to the agenda this evening.
There's none.
Declaration of conflict, ex parte contacts, recite, visit. Commissioners, anything?
No.
Nope. Seeing none, then we will go ahead and move to the consent calendar.
This is actually why you're here. It's not for the other item.
Yeah.
Anyhow, action item A is the minutes from the February 8th, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Item B is the reasoned decision, the Elm Place subdivision, file number S U B D 19 2021. And item C is the reasoned decision for the River City subdivision, file number S U B D 20 2021.
All right, Commissioners, hopefully you had a chance to review consent calendar. If there's no questions, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
My second.
It's been a motion a second. Any further discussion? No, call for a vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schlot Howard?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Citizen issues, this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the commission on issues that are not on this evening's agenda, commission, or comments on issues that are planned for future meeting agendas. We ask that you would hold for that particular meeting. Is there anyone here for citizen issues? Okay, seeing none. We have, if I'm not mistaken, no unfinished roll business, correct?
That is correct.
So that will bring us to the public hearing, Post Falls Title 18 zoning update. We'll open that up. Mr. Manley is all yours.
Good evening, Commissioners. John Manley, Planning Manager here at the City of Post Falls, presenting the housekeeping amendment TA 1 2022. Let's get this thing working. Post Falls Planning Division is the applicant. The proposed change is here. What you see here in your packet is to establish setbacks for the public reserve zone. So we established a public reserve zone for some of our large open space about a year or so ago. The Parks Department has some plans to construct some buildings out on their property without guidance on the setbacks. It kind of left us a little bit kind of in no man's land. So what is provided for you is some setbacks within that ordinance to provide some guidance. The other update is for RV parks and to use a special use permit in the industrial zone. Right now they're permitted outright. So we all know the housing crunch, and we have some industrial lands that are reserved for some places of business, and that was the intent of the industrial zoning designation or for some commercial businesses, not necessarily RV parks. So by having it as a special use permit allows those uses to come before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then you can look at some of the adjoining uses and see if that's the right fit or not for an RV park. The other change is the residential driveway approach. This is added sequentially, and this is actually what started this housekeeping ordinance because recently, you know, we did a Title 12 update where we modified the driveway widths to 40% of the driveway widths. With our driveway, the minimum you could go to in Title 18 is 14 feet. So you'd end up sometimes having a 10-foot drive approach, and then you'd have to get and throw in a 14-foot driveway. So you'd have a four-foot offset. You may not want to do that. If you're a property owner, you may just want to blend in your drive approach and your driveway with, is being one in the same width. So we're changing the codes that way a homeowner could choose to do that, match their driveway to their driveway approach. Another thing that came up while we were drafting this is for recreation facilities. Currently, our code does not require, doesn't allow fences greater than six feet. But if you had a ballpark or you needed, or a golf area that you need to put up a taller fence to screen for public safety, you may want a fence taller than six feet. So this allows that for sports recreation facility for someone to apply for those, for a permit. This one here deals mostly with addressing and the front door being visible from the public rights way. You can see here that's going to be the requirement. But we do allow for a zoning administrator to grant deviations for this when it's just practically implausible. But generally speaking, the goal is to have the front door of a residence addressed, viewed from the public corridor, and for public health, safety, and welfare.
Who is the zoning administrator, John?
It's generally, it's me or a designee. So it's probably either going to be Ethan Porter, Laura Jones, or myself. The other one deals with ADA parking stalls. This has been kind of a nightmare for my entire duration here. So you go, you plan a parking lot, and then you have a bunch of 18-foot parking stalls, standard for any other parking stall, and you end up creating these herky-jerky little sidewalks, or you end up painting a stripe out into a drive aisle to meet the, our code requirements of 20 feet for ADA. I've called the Department of Justice and asked them, I'm like, "Do you require 20 feet?" Because I was trying to figure out why we have 20 feet, because I inherited it when I got on board here. They said, "No, their minimum's 18 feet." And I'm like, "Well, if your minimum's 18 feet, and our regular stalls are 18 feet, why don't we just make it 18 feet so our sidewalks can stay straight and our painted parking stalls are all in the same line?" So this is more of a housekeeping.
Why the Department of Justice?
Department of Justice kind of governs ADA regulations. So I didn't want to just willy-nilly make a change, then they get on the horn, and they're saying, "Wait a second. Now your stalls need to be, why are you doing this?" The other one deals with clarification. We just recently made this code change regarding require, for this requirement, it's a buffer requirement application between single-family and a higher use for incompatibility. And what we did is we exempted out, as you see here, we're proposing to cross it out, we exempted out single-family, two-family, and three-family dwellings from providing a buffer. The reason for this is it's proved problematic having single-family homes buffer between them and commercial. It's really difficult to implement in code enforcement because you have every lot 60 feet wide or 65 feet wide. They all have a buffer. So it's either on a private property, when people like their own property, they like to cut down their own trees, plant the trees they want. It's only natural. Or if you put them in a tract, then you end up having a 15-foot wide or a 25-foot wide, long skinny strip that has to be maintained, and who knows what ends up back there for safety reasons. So we got rid of that as an exemption. But in doing that, we wanted to minimize it on a half acre lots or less. So if you ended up having a single tax parcel of 10 acres and you put on a bunch of single-family homes for rentals, well, more or less, you're, it's like a rental income property, no different than a multifamily, probably shouldn't get the exemption. Same with duplexes and triplex. If you had a big complex on one tax parcel. So this allows us to still get our infill development on some smaller acres, get some multiple single-family or two-family, three-family, as it states, but not having to get that buffer.
How big was the buffer?
The buffer between industrial and residential is 25 feet. The buffer between residential and commercial is 15 feet. So staff still wants to encourage, you know, infill development towards the core of the city, you know, get, get in pocket housing where you want, or if you had some, you know, we wouldn't want you to buffer. Typically, you want the person, the entity making the impact provide the buffer.
So what you're saying is if, if commercial was coming in, there's residential there, commercial was coming in, then the resident, the commercial would still have to put a buffer in between them?
Correct.
Okay.
But if there's existing commercial, residential wants to move in, and there's not really room for the buffer, but they want to move in, it's their choice?
That's the theory, is they see what the world is around them. They see the commercial. They, the city's approved residential next to them, and then at that point in time, they know what they're buying into.
That's what you, we've already done. But now we want to go back and make it a little bit more restrictive, is what you're saying.
Little bit more restrictive, a little bit more clarity, because if you had, like what I said, one acre and you stuck six single-family homes of one acre, and it's, you're not planning on selling them, here it's a leased property, that's no different than a six-plex. So whether it's a six-plex, six, six attached units in that form, or it's six detached units, it's still more or less behaving like a multifamily unit. So...
Okay.
You may not get the exemption then.
The, the existing language in code right now is, is what's crossed out. So just trying to make that clear.
Yeah, the, the existing is... Is those other uses.
Exemption.
And we're just basically trying to make, narrow it down to a half acres.
Yeah.
Is there an instance that has prompted this, where it was abused or something?
There was a duplex development that did come on, a parcel larger than one and a half acre, next to some single-family that was larger than a half acre. And if this language had been in the code, we'd been able to apply a buffer between that duplex development and the single-family development.
And what is in the buffer? What can be in the buffer? Anything? Nothing?
It's, uh, it's split between 50% of the, of the, there's so many evergreen trees every 100 feet, and so many deciduous trees. And it's split 50/50. And then there's so many shrubs every 100 feet. And there's a prescription, and the, there's more trees for, like, industrial to residential than there is commercial to residential.
So that's only like vegetation? It couldn't be a fence?
Well, they both have a fence, no matter what.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's included in the buffer as a fence.
Okay.
So staff looked at that one instance and was like, "Well, more or less, this is going to be either condo-platted, or it's going to be a rental income. It's more or less behaving like multifamily, and it should have been treated like multifamily. Good intentions of the code." Like any code change, there's always little tweaks that you go on that you unforeseen.
Okay.
So that's it. Those are the proposed changes. Any questions on...
So that, I like, that's all we're going to go through on? We're done?
That's it. I kept it short this time for a reason.
Oh, okay.
Last, my last two housekeeping has been pretty meaty. So, and so we, we're proposing a change of tact with our housekeeping. You may see more throughout a year. But instead of doing 21 changes, or we'll do maybe seven, or one, or two, just vary it up.
Okay.
Keep it smaller.
So why did we get these parking diagrams?
Because those go with the exhibit. If you look at the ADA parking stalls, you can see that the proposal is 18 feet deep, and that's in the code. That would go with this slide right here. I think it's on the other sheet that you have right there.
So one of these, yeah.
If you look at the ADA stalls on that.
Okay, on this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
That one there, actually...
So I was just trying to figure out how these, like, I didn't see, I don't know which ones, um, ADA, what, handicap parking. I didn't understand. Are all of these?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. This right here, accessible parking.
Oh, oh, oh.
That's the ADA parking stalls there.
Okay, okay, gotcha, gotcha. And then these are just regular parking stalls.
Yeah, we did, there was, there was enough to, that needed to be adjusted, that we, instead of just doing a cross-out and replace, because we wanted to update those diagrams as well, to, because we, we can actually do colored diagrams in our, with our codifier now, and the old diagrams are just old black and white. They're kind of fuzzy. And so rather than doing a sort of line item, delete and add, delete and add, we just repealed the entire section and are re-adopting the section.
Okay, so we're not seeing the old one?
No.
No.
Not in this case.
Okay, okay. That, I think that's what was confusing me. I didn't see any scratch outs. I didn't see any.
So in essence, they're just exhibits to support the proposed change?
I do want to make a clarification. I'm glad Nancy brought it up, because she did wake me up on one other change. The other change is on the one-way 45-degree. We did add four feet to the overall width to that diagram and that. The parking lot over on the chamber building, if you've driven that and parked in that, it's a little tight if you have a truck. So each stripe has gotten one foot addition, and the drive aisle has a two-foot addition. So a net sum gain of four feet.
So can I ask you a question about the, the parking approach from 14 to 12? The, the entrance to the driveways?
Mm-hmm.
So right now, most of the driveways in Post Falls, the new development, on the other side of the sidewalk, they have that V that goes out that makes up that extra two feet.
With the apron?
Yeah. And it gives you that, that residential look. What happens if we reduce it to the, all the, all the driveway approaches or the width of the driveway? It's going to look like a military base, wouldn't you think?
So we don't include the apron in the width. So the driver approach is the, um, the net concrete that's parallel. The, the apron are just, those are just part of the design. We don't include the throat of that apron. It's the drive approach.
So it's from the sidewalk to the house?
It's the width. It's not the sidewalk to the house. So it's the width along the right-of-way.
So you still get the, you still get the tapered part?
Mm-hmm.
To give it the look of a flare? It's just that you won't have to, it looks kind of crazy if it goes in narrow and then steps out.
Yeah.
And it's just people are just going to be driving across your sidewalk in the grass if you have that, I would think.
Oh, okay.
Right.
I was just afraid we might be, I was understanding, we might lose that apron and that'd look horrible.
But you still get the apron. So it's just if the center's 10 feet, instead of like what Ross brought up, you're then jumping out to 14, having this weird looking deal where, because if our minimum's 14, yet your, your throat is 12, it's just going to look, look funny from the right-of-way at that point.
Thank you.
Also, I just wanted to also note, Nancy with the, with the parking, we also shifted or, some organizational around. We had, it went residential, seasonal, commercial, and we just moved commercial.
Okay, and that would have been in, so as you go down, you have that?
Yeah, it's a little bit easier to read, because it now it goes residential parking standards, commercial parking standards.
Okay.
The seasonal parking, and then the parking, um...
Okay, and that, just whole section, what we're looking at is the new proposed?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. And that, that makes more sense. Like I said, I was looking for what was old, and I couldn't tell what was old and what was new, and...
Any other questions? It would be my understanding that we have no public comment, correct?
Correct.
So there's no need for rebuttal, and I believe that much of the information that we usually go over at the very, very end when we close this out, we're actually actively doing right now. So any other questions for staff?
No. All right, that's it.
I am going to take some of the commentary, though, and add that to the slideshow when it goes before City Council. Hopefully then it'll be a little more clear for them. So I appreciate the questions.
Okay. Nothing, nothing else? Okay. We'll go ahead and close the hearing out. Does everybody feel like questions were answered?
Yeah.
I do.
Okay. Well, if we have no questions, so there's no further comment, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'll give it a try.
Does anybody, does everybody feel good about the half acre? My only thought on that one is it's, it's pretty restrictive. It's going to, that seems like kind of a make or break on a half acre, you know?
So if it's less than a half acre, though, they're, they, they don't have to...
Well, how much of the room are the buffers going to take up acreage-wise? Let's just say it's a typical geometry lot, and they've got residential on three sides.
We, we seldom get lots greater than a half acre. So even a subdivision, if you had multiple lots that are less than a half an acre, none of those lots, when they pull a permit, are going to get a buffer. They're going to get, qualify for that exemption. And typically, we, you wouldn't want industrial next to large half-acre or one, one-acre lots. I mean, it would generally...
I'm more thinking about if, if it's a townhomes next to, uh...
Commercial?
No, it, it would be...
Residential?
Residential.
Oh, yeah.
So if you have townhomes right next to an infill half, you know, .55 acre lot that's next to residential, and they've got to go in and put buffer on three sides because there's existing, you know, old residential on three sides, how much of the, what percentage of the lot is that going to take up? It seems like a pretty big chunk with the buffer.
If you want to, you can increase it. I mean, to me, that, that's why we do these public hearings. A half acre is what we kind of came up with as a good point. If you guys want an acre or less, then that's what you would recommend forward to City Council. City Council could then change it to .85 or change it to two.
That's my only concern. I don't know what you guys think. I can't really picture it. It just seems like a half acre by the time you, how far, wide's the buffer?
For commercial or residential, it's 15 feet.
15 feet. So it'd be a 15-foot swath around inside the fence between there and any driveway or anything, right, or building?
Yeah, 15 or 25, probably.
But you're a little bit more concerned about resi, about, um, single-family to multi, right?
Well, it's really single-family to single-family, but it's in a, it would be in a multifamily, you know, like a, a townhome structure.
Right. So, so is, but is the buffer the same? If it's commercial to multifamily or...
Commercial to multifamily, there's no buffer.
There's no, okay.
Because they're treated, they're treated, because when we changed our code, we're treating multifamily like a commercial use. That's why multifamily is now providing a buffer to residential, which it used to not. But a lot of these apartments that you see that are going in are for our old code, not for our new code. You'll see eventually 15 to 20 years trees and screening to help mitigate.
This would primarily be if it hadn't been subdivided. So if it was a, if it was condoed, a single parcel town, condoed into townhomes versus subdivided into townhome lots, right?
Yeah, if you had a .55 acre example, like you said, and they wanted to go against, um, commercial, they may not be exempted out because they'd be platted as single-family houses.
Okay.
Yeah. So you feel that the half acre is too restrictive? Are you thinking more three-quarter, full acre? What, I mean, what's your thought?
I don't know. He, he's right, that most infill is going to be in the half acre or less range.
Right.
Probably, but it just doesn't seem very big. I don't know. I think an acre would probably be safe, but half acre is probably going to get most of it.
Yeah.
And then whoever it affects, let's just say someone came in with a three-quarter acre, and we tried, that, okay, you're going to have to put in a buffer. Well, they would have a right to then say, "Well, you know what? We need to change the code." They could apply for a code change and do that at that point in time.
No exemption then? They couldn't apply for...
A variance, it would be like a variance?
Yeah, I couldn't apply a variance or an exemption that I know of at this point in time to deal with it. So I'd say, "Well, the code says this, so the only way to get out of it is to fix the code and change it through public hearings, increase it from a half acre to three-quarters of an acre, because you're .7 acres." If it gets approved, then we could exempt you out, and you wouldn't have to put the buffer.
Okay.
Yeah, it's pretty rough, pretty tough. That's a pretty tough business there, but...
Yeah, it's probably going to smoke up a year of their time.
Right.
[laughing] Realistically, right?
Houses for six families in the meantime. What, what do you guys think? You comfortable with half, or?
Oh, I don't know. Now you may be...
It's really hard. It's kind of hard to picture.
Yeah, it might scare a lot of infill away, if they're doing it with, maybe just to go to residential.
You guys could also, once again, you guys don't have to approve items staff brings forward. You could approve everything and leave that one out and recommend leaving that as it is.
And then maybe just take a look at it on a, on a picture, you know, a drawing, so we could see, you know, what the setbacks would look like. I can't really picture it.
Here, I have a piece of paper. You can draw it.
[laughing]
Um, I, you know, but I do think it is a good idea to put in place that buffer. But, 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 you know, Ross, I would say that a half acre is pretty small. And if you put a 15-foot buffer, is that kind of what you're thinking on both sides of that?
Mm-hmm. It's 15 to 25, you said, depending?
Okay, 15, depending. Okay, that, that is going to eat up a lot. Maybe you go three-quarters of an acre. But, but I think, but I do think it's a good, um, it's a good idea to have that in there, just...
Yeah, I think if the concept's good. It's just the size, I'm, I'm not sure on the size, because it could discourage, you know, there's a break, there's a breaking point where it makes sense financially and doesn't make sense, you know?
Yeah, I would be concerned. I wouldn't want to go full acre. But...
We still got to protect the people that are already in place.
Yeah. How often do you run across this situation? I mean, how often would somebody coming in with three sides of residential be coming in there to put something?
Well, it's infill.
I know, but, but usually it would be more residential. It wouldn't...
I'd welcome the problem.
But it'll be, it would, it would be residential as well. Residential, residential is still going to have it. That's the thing.
No, it's not, is it?
Residential, residential, there's no buffer.
There is no buffer.
No buffer.
It's only if they come in with commercial or try to come in with something different.
Okay, so, yeah, if they built one house there, it wouldn't be a buffer. But if it was, but if it was two houses, one tax parcel, it would apply.
You said like a duplex?
Like a duplex.
If it was a duplex and it was .55 acres, one could argue that it's no longer meeting that exemption.
Okay, if we did the half acre, if we did the half...
Yeah, if you did three-quarters of an acre, they wanted to stick in a triplex, then we would see that as multifamily against single-family, put in the buffer.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
It would be a 10-foot.
Was it a 10?
Yeah. A is 10.
So it's 10 foot, my apologies.
Rather than 15.
Okay, it's 10. That does make a difference, rather than 15 or 25, for goodness sakes.
10-foot. If you have a lot that's 10 feet around, you're giving up 10 percent of your...
Multifamily.
Well, what is your setback?
Yeah, so, sorry, my, commercial against residential is 15 feet, but we did with multifamily, go to 10 feet against residential.
So what, would, would that, so could that buffer be part of your setback? Because you're going to have to have a setback anyhow, right? I mean, you can't butt your structure right up to the lot line. You got to set, you got to side setbacks.
Yeah.
So what, so is...
It could be the same zone.
Okay.
So it's basically just going to be plantings in that zone?
Yes, in a fence. What we were getting is we were getting a fence, and then if the side setback's five feet, you'd end up with five feet of maybe a three-story building near multifamily. So we went, um, standing, standing corrected right now to 10 feet, but with trees planted.
Isn't that 10 feet? Then that's fine.
Been at 10 feet, so...
The commercial, and so that to the residential, it would be, it would be now what?
So from a multi...
Residential, residential.
Yeah, from a single-family residential to a duplex or a triplex under a half acre, you wouldn't have a buffer if it's a half acre or less. Once it goes above a half acre, you'd have to have a 10-foot buffer between the multifamily and the single-family.
That seems all right.
Yeah, because you're...
That clarification, to me, helps.
It does to me, too, yeah.
15 or 25 would probably kill it, but 10 seems reasonable. They can, they need that.
Do you want us to tell you we feel like we're, you were right in the first time? Is that what you're wanting to hear?
[laughing] I just wish I could memorize this entire code. [laughing]
Okay, that makes more sense to me.
Yeah.
Any other?
Nope.
No? Ross, you feeling better about it? Okay. Anything else? Okay. Were you putting together a motion?
I'll try. I move it to forward to City Council, TA-0001-2022, Title 18 text amendment with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
Got a motion in a second and a second. Call for vote.
Hampi?
Yes.
Schlot Howard?
Schlaauer?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
All right, administrative or staff reports, anything additional?
There are none.
Commissioner comments?
I have it for the good of the order.
Please.
So I don't know what the correct channel on this. I think it might be an ITD issue, but has anybody else noticed the insane amount of litter on I-90 right now? It's like the worst I've ever seen in the history of Post Falls.
Particularly from westbound, I've noticed it really bad.
Yeah, I think, I think that it's a commercial operator, probably, you know, one of the garbage services with their trucks running I-90 up to Pleasant View because it kind of stops at Pleasant View. But, or maybe the county even hauling to landfill, I don't know. But it's, it's embarrassing. There was a letter in the paper.
Yeah, I saw that.
I've been noticing it for a few weeks, it was just a letter in the paper. But what do you think? Is there some chance, I mean, it's probably not a city issue, but.
Why is everyone looking at field?
It's our, it's our city, it's our city and it's going through the middle of it and it's horrendous.
Yeah, it is, it is bad.
It's the first I've heard of it, I have noticed it, I've seen it.
But we notice it every winter, every, when the snow melts.
The last two years, they've brought that commercial-looking tractor picker out there. But right now, it looks like a hundred garbage trucks dumped along there and then a tornado spread it everywhere. And it's the worst litter I've ever, it's, it's worse than Portland or Seattle right now.
It's really bad.
I will say the courts have been shut down for the past couple of years and so they're probably not getting as many work crew plea deals out of people.
They have the trash picker parked out there at State Line in the median.
But I think, I think we need to look at the, the trash picker's good, volunteers are great. I've heard people mention that they'd be able to do that, but I think we need to look to the root cause. The root cause is we have a commercial operator that's doing it for the last couple of years here and we got to figure, something's got to be done.
So keep an eye out and be vigilant and, yeah.
I mean, this is something that we.
I'll do some poking around, again, it's, it is likely ITD's kind of purview, but there might be some.
We can get the mayor to make us a couple of phone calls.
Enforcement kind of issues.
We can get the planning and zoning commission to volunteer their time and I got this.
I was going to say, it sounds like both of those.
We could go out there for the next hundred years right now and not make a dent.
There was a couple of guys out the other day, they picked a bunch of bags up, walking up and down.
Yeah, but no, as soon as that snow pulled back, I noticed it too, it's absolutely ridiculous.
It's bad.
This isn't people, it's like super concentrated, one spot, drive any arterials, drive any of the other roads around North Idaho, it's beautiful.
Right.
People don't do this, there's something crazy going on.
Yeah, it's not a McDonald's sack, it's a full bag of, yeah.
No, it's crazy.
It's a full bag.
Yeah, something.
Get on that, John.
I appreciate your passion though, I do, because I think you're absolutely right.
No, I, I think everybody's noticed it, how that looks.
We'll do some poking around and we'll do a report back today.
Yeah, I was going to say, keep us in the loop and let us know. And if there's ways we can assist. Okay, anything else?
Someone we can send Ross to.
And if it turns out that it's garbage service or mafia-related, I didn't say anything.
I believe I got that on record, so, okay. Anything else to add? If not, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.